I'd like to call this meeting to order. I apologize for a few minutes late. We had two new trustee members that were being sworn in, so it took us a couple of minutes. My apology. If we could have a roll call, please. Here.
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 Thank you. Could we please stand for the pledge allegiance? Just have three speakers today. Four. And I will call you up as they were handed to me. Sean Cummings.
Good morning, everybody. Or afternoon, sorry. I want to welcome the new members. This is where careers go to die unless you're an elected official. So I don't know how long you'll be here. You are very young. I hope this works out for you. I'm a little concerned, I won't lie. I am interested in the agenda item where we're bringing in a consultant. I am thrilled to death that the jail is removing themselves from this body and having their own attorneys and having their own. I would recommend a forensic accountant rather than just somebody to look at the books because there is no way on earth the amount of employees that is claimed exists. It's impossible. I run businesses for 40 years. Nothing adds up on that. Chris Johnson and I went over and talked to State Treasurer. We've moved on down the line with that because I want to get an audit on that. So I would highly recommend you get a forensic audit before that. Other than that, I wish you all the best of luck. I don't see what you can do any different than anybody else because nobody calls the shots up here. So I'm just telling you this from many years of being on this side. Don't sell yourselves down the river for anything up here because none of it matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Johnson.
Afternoon, everybody. So I am actually liking what Ms. Kimery is doing. I think that any way that we can circumnavigate the jail trust legally within the realm of reality and possibilities to get the job done for the detainees and the employees do it. Because obviously 11 failed inspections, almost 60 dead, yada, yada, yada. Bang up job. So I agree with you on that one. Also like Ms. Erin Etherington, she's been pretty solid. So that's a good choice. So my only concern is that is as long as she isn't doing the like, I don't know if she could do both, like the attorney, the district attorney on that. But anyway, so yeah, circumnavigate them in any way possible to solve the crisis because this is an emergency. This is something I've been talking about for years is that we need to treat this like an emergency. I've met with county officials, I've met with trustees, past and present, and I've always mentioned that this doesn't get treated as an emergency. You know, I mentioned my military service, the various things I had to do was all wartime. It was all emergency, emergency, emergency. That's how we need to operate with this thing. Because waiting for consultants, to have another consultant is not how we solve this. For instance, for years, we have said, hey, we are so far behind in having staff, why don't we partner with the law enforcement entity to bring in 10 or 15 Joes if we can, activate reserve folks or whatever to help with site checks? Everybody says it's impossible, it's easier to go to the moon. We can't do this. We can't partner with the law enforcement agency, but we can hire consultants. We can hire education consultants to advise the trust, but we can't partner with law enforcement entities to help make sure people are safe, the employees and the folks that live there. Again, Mr. Cummings said it best, this is a dumpster fire. I mean, the ship's sinking. And I just caution anybody who just got on to really look at the history of this, including our new chair, to look at the history of everything. Now, there's a sentence I like to say. I'm a counselor. And one of the things I talk about when I talk with people is I say a sentence. It actually came from my CEO. She was speaking out of education form. And she mentioned that a boy hit the girl and the girl cried. We in society focus on the girl crying instead of all the context. You're mad at activists and family members because we're calling you out and critiquing you, but you're not looking at all of the years of issues. For instance, the first time we met the jail trust, they tried to commit money laundering of federal funds. So understand the history and let's treat this like it's an emergency. Thank you.
Jody Poplin.
Hi. As far as Antonio Hendricks, he's waiting on a rehab right now. And he is speaking. And what's bad for the trust and what's bad for the jail is he's starting to remember. As far as inmate Wayne Sausier, he was admitted again into the facility. He was again given no mats. And he had a choice, a metal bunk or the concrete floor. So he was able to get a mat from his friends and his cellmate. And now he's in a boat on a mat in the floor. And y'all put another inmate in there. So that's three. Manhattan did not build one three-man cell. Those big corner cells, those are for two inmates, one that may need a wheelchair or a walker. So also inside this cell is Wayne Sausier and a walker and a boat and two inmates. So somebody needs to fix it. That's too crowded, way too crowded. But he also went four days with no blood thinner. And he can only go 48 hours with no blood thinner, according to his doctor to the dentist. So I knew that. And he had a court date originally December the 4th. I knew on Monday that it was changed to January 27th. But the jail still pulled him and took him on that baloney rock out in that cold. And he's a handicap man. So therefore, the jail and the court clerks need to communicate better. There is a lack of communication between everybody. We're not standing up here lying, I'm not lying about any of this. And y'all need to check into this and make sure that everything is okay. We gotta treat people on death row humanely. Why don't we do it in Oklahoma County Detention Center?
Thank you. Mr. Falk.
Good afternoon. First of all, welcome to our new members. I feel like I'm just going to do a quick recap of what's been going on the last few weeks. And I'm going to miss a lot because a lot has happened. We have had three members resign from this trust. One of them walked out in the middle of a meeting, although her name is still on the website. So you might remove that because I thought she might magically resurrect herself back onto the trust today. Didn't happen. We found out that our jail, our new jail, $260 million jail, which was actually budgeted at $300 million when we passed the bond issue in 2022, is now up to $830 to $35 million. We have tripled the budget. We have tripled the budget. And I only bring that up to the trust because you guys should be advocating for a smaller jail, just like we have done. We cannot, for the next 30 years, continue to incarcerate more and more people in Oklahoma County, predominantly disproportionately people of color, disproportionately people who are trans or LGBTQ. We cannot do that. It has failed. We have been through, I think you might be the fifth jail trust chair in five years. This makes no sense. This makes absolutely no sense. Now, how did we triple the budget of the jail? We tripled it because the original budget, Miles Davidson, was a sham. It was a sham. You knew that we couldn't build a jail for $260 million. That was the amount of the retiring bonds. We're trying to blame it on the prices of concrete and steel, which have not gone up 300%. Non-residential building is up 40%. So we should be looking at around a $400 million jail, even with inflation for three years. But we're not. We've tripled the budget and it'll continue to go up. In the meantime, people still suffer in that jail. In the meantime, people still get their bond and take three to four to five days to get out of the jail. We've had, apparently Derrick Scobie resigned as vice chair and is not here today. I would have asked him why if he resigned as vice chair because he didn't think the jail trust had any power. Is he remaining on the trust, but maybe he's gone too? I can only hope so. After his tirade, anti-trans tirade at the last meeting, where he tried to compare trans people to people identifying as a rabbit. This is just insanity. This has turned into just a huge deadly ugly farce. And it is time to return the jail to a competent person. Sheriff Tommy Johnson has proven himself to be competent. He could handle the employees there and plug his own into it. And it is time that we make that move and do the right thing for the people in that jail and the citizens of Oklahoma County.
Thank you. Item one on the agenda is the approval of minutes of last meeting. I hope you've had a chance to review that with entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Yes.
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 Got it? Item number two is to receive, access and discuss report by the jail administrator. Mr. Kimery.
Good afternoon, everybody. First thing I want to do is obviously I want to welcome Ms. Robinson, Mr. Holly to the trust board. Just want you to know I look forward, along with the staff at the Oklahoma County Detention Center and working with you guys and leading us into the future. Just going to give an operational and financial update. Some of the topics we're going to talk about is recruitment for the next academy, cost-saving measures that we've implemented, our medical staff, our tech update and our residential statistics. So on the first slide that you're looking at, as of today, December the 8th, we have 426 total inmates. We have 148 JNS inmates. The JNS stands for sentencing, those that have already been sentenced for DOC and they're awaiting for transfer to Department Corrections. Let me also highlight the fact that in September of this year, we had 245 JNS inmates. In October, we had 203. In November, we had 195. And today, we're sitting at 142. So we reduced that by over 100 in the last three months. So proud that we're getting those, getting those numbers down. And of course, our average daily population for 2025 so far is sitting at about 1529. Back in 2021, it was 1641. And then it's gone steadily down and then it went back up and now we're coming back down. So it peaked in around July and so we're coming back down to where kind of the average number should be. Okay, our Detention Officer Academy, it again, it's going to start in January. Having a little bit of an issue getting the folks that we're really need, that we're looking for good quality folks in there. We've only had five that's accepted a position. They're currently working in the facility right now, waiting for the academy to start. This is a holiday season and Christmas is coming up. And we basically, if we don't at least have six folks, we're probably going to postpone the academy for a few weeks until we can get those numbers up. I don't want to waste time, resources and personnel with just six or seven folks. All right, just our receiving update. We did, kind of proud of this, we had a less than a 1% error rate for all of our fingerprinting and booking process. We get that from OSBI. They do an audit to determine, you know, how many errors that we make downstairs in receiving. So we've dropped that considerably down to where we only have a 1% error rate. Our cost-saving measures, we've identified, obviously, up in medical. We have made some changes up there. We have doing dental x-rays in the house now. We purchased a handheld x-ray, which saved us a lot of money with, by instead of having to send them out to get x-rayed. So we've saved a lot of money there. Our medication pass changes, the way we were handing out meds has also changed. And that's going to save us quite a bit of money. So instead of paying a little bit different rate for a dental hygienist, we're able to do that with just a certified dental assistant. So again, that's saving us money. We also used, we purchased disposable spacers for our alpritirol inhalers. Instead of getting the whole thing, they can, we can reuse it and we just throw the spacer away. That saved us a lot of money. So those, that's some of the areas in medical that we've did some cost-saving measures with. All of our contracts that we have, both the current ones and ones in the future are going to be heavily, heavily scrutinized by myself and the financial team. And we're going to negotiate and all those contracts, again, for cost-saving measures. We have one that's ongoing right now that we had a meeting with last week that they've already agreed to save us $150,000. Their, actually their CEO is flying in this week to actually sit down and talk with us. And we're hoping to get that number raised a little bit higher than 150. So we're looking hopefully for good things on that. Okay? Our IT, information technology, all of our maintenance. We've got a fire marshal that's coming in for final certification on our HVAC for December the 9th. That's tomorrow. We did get installed a new vacuum pump, which basically keeps, you know, our floors from flooding. So that has been installed. We also done some of the equipment purchase. We purchased a whole lot of new computers, laptops and desktops. Although Dale did mess up, they sent us the wrong desktop. So we've got 50 desktop computers that we're going to have to send, send back to Dale and they get to send us the right ones. And also, we're doing a fiber, currently accepting bids for a fiber upgrade in the building. Jail tracker, again, that hasn't changed much. That's how much it's costing us for a year's service and maintenance. We've suspended about 1,600 accounts due to inactivity. Future changes, we are looking at some other options besides jail tracker. Some of the reasons why is the billing, some billing issues, some identification issues that we're having. We want to make sure we're doing the proper vetting for inmate release so that we don't have a bad release. We're looking for enhanced biometrical and facial recognition, which incorporates iris scanning and also artificial intelligence. We want to make sure that the right people are getting out that's supposed to be getting out. As far as our criminal investigation, cases that we're currently working, we've got about 15 that's open. We closed 13 of those. Most of those, which those numbers have been going down, is possession of contraband inside of a jail facility. We did have one cell phone that was discovered, was discovered, I think it was last week on a person. But again, those numbers are going down. We've enhanced our train for folks that's in receiving. When those people are coming in, we're doing a little bit better job of searching people and that is paying big dividends. Recent increase, we have had a recent, this does concern me. We have some recent increase in assaults on our, our staff members, our officers. For 2025, we had 33 charges that were filed against folks for assaulting our people over there. We've had eight assaults on staff just in the last two weeks that has resulted in criminal charges. So probably going to do a quick meeting and address why, why this is happening. Probably one of the reasons why is that we have done a very, very good job. The criminal investigation guys have done a really good job about going up. I require them to do cell searches every day on one of the floors. And again, that has paid big, big, big dividends. Next slide. All right, medical division, we have added 17 new staff members. We do have one outstanding. We're trying to get a new APRN person hired and that will help us out tremendously. But our numbers have, have gone up quite a bit, which has taken a little bit of stress off of our medical folks upstairs. We do have the current RFP that's under review. And we're looking at that, probably present that to January meeting once we get, get them all read through. One thing I want to address is our Narcan doses that have been administered. If you'll look on there, in November of 2024, this time last year, we had over, we had 20 Narcan that was administered. March of 2025, we had 21. In June of this year, we had 10. In November, we have had two. So again, I go back to the efforts of our investigations folks, our cell search folks. They're being very diligent. And we are starting to find less and less contraband in these cells, which is a good thing. And that, and that's indicative of the number that you see up here for, for last month. We only had two Narcan. That's, that's just, I mean, I don't know if everybody understands how big a deal that is. That is a big, big deal. If you look to the right there, you can see our emergency room sendout. We had 34 folks that we had to send out. We had 13 inmates that spent a total of 48 days in the hospital for November. We had 23 calls for IMSA, they responded 23 times. And then we had an additional 47 that we took via ourselves. Okay, population statistics. Again, that pretty much is the same from last month, has not changed really a whole lot. Our November bookings, we had a total, this is from Oklahoma City Police Department, we had a total of 1,197. 420 of those were just city charges only. We had 774 state charges that was filed on those folks. Out of the 423 reported in jail tracker, 358 were released in less than 10 hours. So getting those numbers down. I know we do have a few that's taken a little bit longer, but it's coming down. And that's, that's the main thing. 65 had a greater than a 10-hour release time due to appearance before, you know, their municipal court. So that takes a little bit longer. And our current population and the charges, we have 151 folks in there for murder. We've had, we got 1534 with criminal felonies and 911 are in there for criminal misdemeanor. And as you can see, the top charges that we currently have, it's actually went up just a little bit. It's usually, fired by a felon is usually the number one charge. That's been replaced by possession of CDS, just by 2%, that's, that's usually reversed. So that went, that, there was a change there just a little bit. Everything else is pretty much kind of stayed plus or minus. Our top arresting agencies, again, Oklahoma City, County Sheriff's Office, HBNPD, Midwest City Police. Now, we, we had to put ourselves on there, OCDC. Just make sure you read that asterisk at the bottom. Those are just bond surrenders and walkthroughs that's coming and surrendering themselves, okay? Our special housing classification, this is average. We have 228 in protective custody. And we have 301 that are MHO, mental health observation. Okay, next slide. This is our transient population, our homeless. Just keep in mind that these are, these numbers are self-reported. This is what they tell us when they come in to receiving. We ask them that question and this is, this is what they say. So the metric is basically for November, the total bookings were 574. We did have 28 duplicate arrests, individuals with three arrests with two and individuals with two arrests, there's 26, I think that should be three. But again, these are folks, it's self-reported. So there's really not a hard, reliable way to independently, you know, verify somebody. We have gone back and looked and a lot of these folks that say that they're homeless, one time, if we go back and pull them, they've been there before, they'll have an address on their information. So, you know, sometimes they'll, they'll give us an address and sometimes they'll, they'll tell us that they're homeless. Our resident welfare programs is pretty robust. We've got all these folks up there, right, that are coming in here. We do have, our GED program is, is kind of at a standstill right now because of their, the GED instructor that they had that was coming in has quit. So we're in the process from getting a new GED instructor. And that is all I have. Can I need any questions?
Questions, comments? Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
I guess I do have a question. The criminal felony count, what month is that from? Is that from December?
November.
Okay. The criminal felony count plus the misdemeanor count. Are there duplicates in there? Because that doesn't, that's not reflected in the November daily population count.
These, these are just the charges against the folks, just the charges. Yeah, sorry.
Anyone else? Motion to approve the report?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Who did the second?
I did second. It was a motion and a second.
I think you need to push the button.
Well, mine's not showing up on the, on the motion. Yeah.
You got it, man? Yes?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, agenda, item three, to receive, accept and discuss report regarding income statements, financial reports and current budget.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our two new members. Glad to have you here. We're just going to take a brief look at the November financials today. Total revenue in November was below budget by $63,831. And some of the notable differences in actual versus budgeted were, November revenue from state prisoner boarding in October was $55,141 below budget. The commissary revenue was above budget by $34,000 due to a partial guaranteed commission's payment of $33,335 for last year. And the last one, municipalities boarding revenue was $920. The Oklahoma City contract is still pending. And now to our expenses. The total expenses for November were above the budget by $31,598. Some notable variances were salaries waived. Some notable variances were salaries, wages and benefits. Those were below budget by a hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. But as in previous months, these were used for the professional service other fees, that last item on the slide, for safety checks from an outside vendor. Telecommunication supplies were above budget by thirty-two thousand fifty-eight dollars for an update for the network project. Professional service transportation deputies were over budget by sixty-three thousand due to paying both August and September invoices in November. And that last one, professional service other fees were above budget by one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. A hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars was expended for staffing, safety checks, which is what we were talking about. Um, that's what we use those payroll dollars, unused payroll dollars to fund those safety checks there. So in summary, for the month of November twenty twenty-five, jail operations produced a net loss for the month of six hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Questions, comments? Do we have a motion to accept the report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item number four, discuss, discussion and possible action to approve invoices and claims till December the eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Any questions?
You got a point?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Motion to approve claim.
Motion to approve, is there a second? Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Number five, agenda item number five, receive, accept and discuss reports or comments by the trust chairman or vice chairman regarding operation of improvements for the Oklahoma County Detention Center, which may include personnel recruitment, recruitment initiatives. Oklahoma State Health Department matters, medical procedures and that matters, budgetary and financial matters. Just a couple of things I wanted to say there, obviously, and I have waited until this time just to welcome our new trustees. Thank you for being here, thank you for being willing to serve. We're excited about that. And the, uh, any other business that we want to do with the addition of two brand-new trustees? We probably are going to look at, at the January meeting and that therefore give proper ti- proper time for you guys to bring yourselves up, up to speed, if that makes sense. I don't know that we need a motion on this, okay? Number six. I think discussion, possible action to nominate an, an elected trustee to serve as vice chairperson. Uh, since Mr. Scobie resigned that position, it's open, and we'd like to move that also to, to the January meeting. Do we need, do we need a motion for that? They just wanted to defer it.
Motion to defer to January.
We have a motion to defer, a second?
A second.
And a second? Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, item number seven, discussion, possible action to ratify a contract with MGT and PAC Solutions to perform analysis of jail revenues and expenditures. And while it was mentioned earlier in the comments, to have a forensic audit, that's not the same as, but it's an approach in that direction. So I'm not saying that it takes the place of it, but, um, anyway, we'd like to approve this, this contract. I think it's for thirty-three hundred and fifty dollars. And we need a motion to approve or discussion? We got a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second? Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Number eight. Report regarding meetings of the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority Citizens Advisory Board with discussion and possible acceptance.
Yes, good afternoon, and welcome to our two newest jail trust members, including one of my friends.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, I'm Erin Eagle, I'm chair of the Citizens Advisory Board and here to present a report from some of the work that has been conducted over the last several weeks. Um, our, Mr. Holman and myself took the time to conduct focus groups within the Oklahoma County Detention Center. And so I'd like to share some of the feedback. Um, for those of you that have served on the jail trust for some time, you know that I have done this many, many times. And I have heard a lot of feedback over that time. And I will say that this time was largely negative, which came as a surprise to me. Um, but what I will share is that in the women's pod, it was a slightly smaller group. And some of the feedback that I heard from them was different than what I've heard before. So I think it's worthy that I note that in advance, and then similarly with the men's pod. But beginning with the women's pod, one of the first things that they immediately noted is that being without sunlight is very challenging. And we can all appreciate that, but that was something that they hadn't, they don't normally bring up to me. They did identify that staff is very overworked. And they talked for quite a while about the cleanliness of the showers, that they often feel like they have to clean the showers themselves using whatever supplies they have, which oftentimes includes their feminine hygiene products. They had indicated, and I don't know the circumstances behind this, but that they had been in lockdown for two weeks and had only had three showers in that period of time. They also mentioned that the toilet, some of their toilets had black mold. Um, and additionally, that their medical tickets are taking up to three weeks for responsiveness. There was a lot of discussion around the tablets. They have been removed from the cells, but they were not sure why. Um, and very similarly to what they have expressed in the past is that commissary is too expensive. They specific, and I challenged them on this and said, okay, tell me like how much, how much is commissary? And so the women in particular said that a jar of peanut butter is ten dollars. Um, and I'm going to give a little bit of my perspectives on the commissary because I did receive a report from the detention center. I think it's important that we discuss that. So I'll, I'll table that for later in my report. Now, some of the good things that the women said is that they really appreciate some of the guards and staff, that they're grateful for them, stating that a lot of them do go above and beyond. And that, this was interesting, they like to find a way to do more to praise and celebrate the staff that are doing really, really well for them. So I thought that was remarkable. They absolutely love that they can order books now, they can order two a week. They said that that is definitely a bright spot in their week, and that they additionally love the religious programs. Um, at the conclusion of my time with them, I said, please tell me the top three things that they appreciate the most. And they said, the religious programs, number one, tablets, number two, and books, number three. Uh, I then asked, what are the top three things to be improved? They said food, more rec time, and then they also would like hair products that are better suited for women of color. All right, moving on to the men's pod, this was a very large group, probably the largest that I have ever interacted with during the focus groups. Fifty-ish, maybe more than that. Um, it did include several that had been there for three, three years, one to three years. So that was interesting. Um, some of the things that they remarked is that they have, have dirty towels, only receiving one towel for thirty days. Uh, again, they remarked that commissary is too expensive. I challenged them, asked them to give me an example, and they said beef sticks are five dollars. Um, they absolutely love the tablet, similarly to the, the women, and they'd like them back so that they can listen to music and work on their GED. They have been out four days a week for two hours at a time. Um, they did mention that they're not receiving free calls anymore due to the new service provider. Medical is slow, some complained of dental pain. Um, they similarly to the women complained that their cells are not cleaned regularly and that they would be willing to do so. They would like access to books or religious programming. They mentioned they still have some bedbugs and roaches. Um, they like board games and soap. And the top three things that the men appreciate are GED classes, tablets, and the nicotine patches, which evidently have recently been added to commissary, and they like lit up about that. So, um, so in terms of commissary, I did ask for a report from the detention center, and it is a hefty report. So I'm not going into detail on it, but I just wanted to get, shed some perspective. Um, so in looking at just items that, you know, we probably purchase when we go to Target or Walmart, one of those would be, let's say, a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup, uh, two-pack. Um, it is, uh, on the commissary list, it's two dollars and fifty-five cents. And in doing my own look at Target and Walmart, we're paying about two dollars. So it's not, you know, enormously more, but it is, obviously, there's a pass-through, there's a fee associated with that. So just want to give you some perspective. Um, uh, Dr. Pepper is two dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, an iced honey bun is four dollars. And for instance, a toaster pastry is three dollars. So I just share that with you to, cause I don't know how often you all have a, a look at the commissary report. This is a reoccurring theme that we hear in the focus groups. Um, so I don't have an action, I just am sharing this for your information and for your own discussion. Um, I do want to additionally add that, um, the, the officers that accompanied us during this time were phenomenal. They've been with the detention center for a number of years. Officer Romero in particular spent a fair amount of time visiting with us and says she's been with the detention center for six years, and that this is the best that it has been in that time. She said there's a lot of improvements, particularly to benefit the detainees. For instance, the fact that they get fruit now, um, as well as, you know, books and additional resources. She did say, I thought this was interesting. She did say that oftentimes detainees are confusing feelings of anxiety due to the holidays, especially with medical needs. Um, and so I just, again, I'm sharing that for perspective. I think that's a really important component that should be considered um, when it, when it comes to what we're hearing, uh, from, from the staff in particular who are responding to these needs. Uh, in terms of recommendations from the Citizens Advisory Board going forward, I would like to incorporate staff into the focus group discussions. So very important indeed that we continue to have conversations with the men and the women detained there. But I also think it's very valuable for us to be considering the feedback and input from the staff. Um, and getting, allowing them to feel seen and heard as well. Uh, and then additionally, just a recommendation to continue to evaluate the commissary pricing. Our Citizens Advisory Board will not be meeting again until January. Um, we have reinstated our subcommittees and have chairs identified for those subcommittees. Uh, we'll be building out additional members to serve on those subcommittees over the next coming weeks. I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Thank you for your report.
Yes.
With regard to the black mold in the toilets and the showers, were they able to show you that?
They did not.
I would recommend, that's what I did, if you tell me that this is going on, ask them to show me that.
Yeah.
The other thing, question would be on the commissary, uh, the contractor, did that put out the bid? Okay, so you can't shop around and I'll get this from
Right.
Walmart, this from Target, so whoever the contractor is elected, that's their product.
For sure.
It's important to understand that.
Right.
You can't just go shopping around. One company gets that contract, and they're going to divide it, and you have to kind of deal with whatever.
Correct.
And I did get a report, you know, some things were, a lot of, yeah, but some things were just what you pay anyone for.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you for your report.
Do we, do we need a motion to accept it?
Do we have a motion to accept the report? And a second?
A second.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Number nine on our agenda is just to announce the regular scheduled meeting, uh, for this trust in January. It would be Monday, January the twelfth, unless something changes that between now and then, which I'm unaware at this point. And at this time, I think we need to adjourn to executive session. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Got a motion? And a second? Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Could we have a motion to return from executive session?
Yes.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Yes.
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 And we'll go to item number 12, action regarding the confidential communications between the public body and our attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to proceed as discussed.
We have a motion to proceed as discussed, second.
Second.
And a second. Yes.
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 And item number 13, same.
Yes, sir, motion to proceed to discuss.
Motion to proceed to discuss, second. Yes.
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 And before we entertain a motion to adjourn, are there any trustees that would like to have five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever? Okay, that might have been a whole bunch. Motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, to adjourn.
Yes, we have both.
Yes.
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 Yes.